Okay. All right. We'll call the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Hole for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. The clerk will call. The roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank. Frank is absent. Freeman. Freeman is absent. McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal is absent. Porter. Porter is absent. Prather. Prather is absent. Snow. Snow is absent. Stevens.
Present.
Four present.
Okay, thank you. We do not have anybody for public comment registered, I don't believe.
No, we do not.
Okay. No public forum under reports of officers, boards, and special committees. We have two individuals from ComEd that have joined us here this evening. We have Susanna Strangemeyer, who's the External Affairs Manager with ComEd, and we also have Henry Pierce, our Economic Development Manager. Henry, I was told that you would make a presentation first. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having us today. Excited to be here with you. So, as the mayor mentioned, I work with our economic development team here, and so I wanted to provide a little bit of context on how ComEd looks at economic development and works with local communities, and I'm going to hit a little bit on what we're doing specifically out here in Belvidere with growth dimensions as well. So if you don't mind stepping to the next slide. Just at a high level, our group is really focused on growing the regional economy and elevating ComEd's industry leadership position to really create a virtuous cycle to attract more business development. And so the few key themes that we're focused on are driving business development through internal and external partnerships, focusing on inclusive, equitable job creation and capital investment in spur and growth in new and emerging markets such as EV manufacturing or indoor agriculture. And so several of the ways that we do, what we do is really highlight and differentiate the state of Illinois by promoting our strong assets. And Illinois actually has some very, very strong energy assets. Our power prices are actually the second lowest in the Midwest and below the U.S. national average, and they've actually risen the second lowest in comparison to any other state in the country since nineteen ninety-seven. And so that's pretty considerable, you know, as a business makes an investment, they're considering the next twenty years, not just tomorrow, and so that stability gives them confidence. In addition, we've invested billions of dollars to modernize and upgrade our grid, and that's really resulted in industry-leading reliability and best-on-record performance over the last several years. Further, all of our customers have access to one hundred percent renewable power and clean energy through Illinois' competitive energy markets, and that's becoming a much, much bigger trend in the last year, two years, three years, et cetera. We also have some substantive energy efficiency programs, which I know Susanna will be talking a little bit about, and a line extension program that's especially noteworthy for either new businesses or businesses that are expanding and adding electrical capabilities to really offset the costs that they are required to submit and help them recoup those costs in the form of refunds over time. And then we're also looking to partner with communities to help spur electrification of, for example, transportation and other sectors as well. So diving more into Belvidere here and our work with growth dimensions, we do a lot of different things. Right off the board, I sit on Growth Dimensions Board of Directors, Executive Committee, and Business Development Committees, and we financially support the organization and help it grow and attract new businesses here to Belvidere and Boone County. In addition, when Intersect Illinois, which is the statewide economic development organization that really focuses on marketing and attracting new businesses to Illinois from across the country and really globally, sends out requests for information, which are basically documents or requests from companies that are looking at making a new investment in different locations. We help Growth Dimensions respond with electrical information, and you know, your larger power users, such as an EV manufacturer or data center, energy is really at the top of their list of considerations, and so we help promote those assets with growth dimensions. In addition, and on the last slide in my deck, also, we work on proactively marketing and highlighting good large power locations, again, for, you know, either EV manufacturers or manufacturers in general or even data centers. There's been a huge, you know, increase in data centers to Illinois over the last couple of years, and actually the Chicago MSA is in the top five data center markets in the entire country, and so that's really expanding. And then lastly, and just some additional considerations, the infrastructure out here in Belvidere is very robust, and so there are significant capabilities to expand for businesses that are either, you know, adding production lines or looking to add other electrical capabilities. And so we have existing capacity in line that could be extended, you know, within twelve months for larger projects and for even smaller projects, you know, twelve weeks to three months. It really depends on the size, but I think that the main takeaway here is that there is capacity out in this area that can be used to meet new or even expanding businesses. And then, as I alluded to earlier, our investments have really resulted in industry-leading reliability, and out here in Belvidere specifically, we've had some, the last two years, our SAFI, which is basically a reliability metric that outlines reliability performance, has performed below point five, and that really indicates that on a blanket average, less than half the people in Boone County or Belvidere experience one interruption a year. And so that's very favorable across the entire industry, and so that's a big strength out here. And then lastly, I've just included the general link to our new business hotline and our processes that really get a project started and kicked off the bat. And then this is just an example. I know it's hard to read the text. You have it on your slides, but this is part of a larger promotional deck that we use to send out to developers, real estate brokers, site selection consultants, and more to really highlight potential good power locations, again, for those huge power users, big data centers or EV manufacturers, you know, there's been obviously that recent push. And so looking to, again, partner with Belvidere and Growth Dimensions more specifically to help attract those new businesses here to the area. And so really, that's all I had prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Henry, would you comment on reliability a little bit more? I know some of the reliability that we've experienced or that has been stable, is that due to some of your SCADA, your switching that you guys have installed that allows the lines to be switched out automatically?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's exactly it. Part of those huge investments that we've made over the last ten-plus years has been both to modernize the grid, you know, replace aging infrastructure, but then also install smart infrastructure such as smart switches that really automatically reroute power, and so you might see your lights flick on and off, but you no longer experience an outage. And that's, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but over the last ten years or so, we've avoided upwards of twelve or thirteen million interruptions due to that smart technology.
And then also, thank you, and then also with some of the development that Growth Dimensions has been working on with the city regarding our ability to have capacity and serve some of that area, for instance, along twenty, along the I ninety corridor and the interchange at Irene Road. We do have, hopefully, we will have some development along in those areas, and, you know, ComEd is able to, is going to be able to meet whatever we need for capacity and for customer service.
Absolutely, and I know I've been engaged with the Growth Dimension teams on a couple of the potential projects that are looking at a couple of those areas and help them with some energy, you know, general timeline information, but those programs and those new sites would definitely be applicable to our Rider DE program that provides large upfront credits and accelerated refunds for any infrastructure work that's required. So absolutely.
You know, that is really great, and, you know, it's nice to know that here in Illinois, especially in ComEd's territory, that we don't have what some communities have throughout the country with brownouts or blackouts, and we haven't had that. We're thankful that we do have the power reserve capacity to be able to grow, to be able to have economic growth. So if there's any questions for Henry, anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Henry. I appreciate you coming out. Nice to see you again.
Likewise, and thank you for having me.
Yep. And we also have Susanna Strangemeyer, the External Affairs Manager with ComEd here this evening, and she's going to talk about the city's energy efficiency profile. And I will tell, I will mention this, is that when we had some outage, we had an outage, a storm go through here in the spring, we had a tree drop across West Locust Street, and it took out, we had a sizable outage, and I've dealt with that before in the past, and I was able to contact Susanna, and she actually had crews dispatched, and we were able to clean that up, and that was a three-phase across, a tree across three-phase. So we were affected, but I wanted to thank you publicly for helping us because I know sometimes those get put aside and they are a priority issue, but you definitely placed us on a priority position, so very grateful. Nice to see you tonight.
It's good to see you too, Mayor, and thank you so much for having us. And on behalf of all of the ComEd subject matter experts, five thousand that span many, many different organizations, you probably, you know, your eyes would cross over when you talk about peeling back an onion. You just can't keep peeling back this onion. There's just so much to it. And on behalf of those, I will let them know that the city of Belvidere appreciates their hard work. So it's been a long two years with the pandemic, working under protocols and stuff, and so the appreciation is definitely going to be nice for them. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about energy efficiency. I have this slide here for folks who may not be familiar with the different programs we offer. We have programs and we have tools, and both of them can be effective for you. I've given this presentation so it can be posted, it can be circulated via email, and the links are live. So if you're curious about one of the programs or you want to test out one of the tools, you can drill down by hitting the link and, you know, checking that out. What we're going to do tonight, I'd actually like to start with providing Mayor Morris the energy reports for the profile of Belvidere, and then I'm going to go through a little bit of that and what that means to the city of Belvidere, and then if you have any questions, you can let me know. So first of all, for program year two thousand and twenty, Mayor Morris, if you'd like to come over here. On behalf of Gil Kionis, our CEO, and Terry Donnelly, our COO, and of course Mark Baranek, who's been watching the city of Belvidere for the past year, we would like to present you with this report, and thank you so much for you and your community, and for those who are watching who've engaged in the Energy Efficiency Program. I'll go over these numbers with you so you have an idea of what that is, but thank you very much for your two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. And then we've got the year end, and so this is, or the year for the program to date, and that's from twenty, two thousand and eight to date. So I'll go over these numbers again, but thank you so much for this also, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
Tell Mark Baranek I said hello.
I will.
Thank you very much.
I will. I sure will. Thank you. If you could go to the next slide, what I'd like to walk through, and if, again, this is in electronic format, so you can share it and post it. If you want to follow, I don't know if you have printed copies, but I have printed copies in the back.
We do.
Great. I also have what we call a ComEd Community Package, and basically what our Energy Efficiency Program does is they put information that's similar to what's here. It's a little bit less than what's on the website, so you can flip through, but it's definitely some information that can explain these programs. So the programs and tools that I listed, these are the results of what the citizens of Belvidere have done. So in this program, two thousand and twenty year, there were five hundred participants, okay? So people contacted ComEd, and they said, I would like to do something. Some of them put a smart thermostat in, in fact, two hundred. Five hundred were able to get rebates, and we have different kind of rebates. In the community packet, there's a flip-through that talks about the rebates that you can get. There's also more information on the website for the rebates. These can be things that you buy at the store that are Energy Star and where you immediately get the results of the rebate when you purchase it. Others are things that you can mail in. Home assessments that are conducted, you had twenty-nine this year. Basically, a home energy assessment is if you haven't done it, you call ComEd and you schedule it. Right now, you can do one that is remote, virtual, or you can do one in person, and the presentation that I provided here has links with videos, so you can kind of see what that would look like or feel like for you. They go through and they assess your home. They talk a little bit about the LED lights. They talk about your HVAC. They'll look at the water flows. It's something we do in companionship with Nycor, so there's a little bit of opportunity for just, not just your electricity, but also your water flow. And then we've got the refrigerators recycled. There were forty-four, and the total bill savings to the customers equates to thirty-one thousand dollars, thirty thousand one hundred dollars. When you look down at the bottom half, you've got public sector. So we had LED streetlights installed here, and I worked with Brett on that over a couple of years, and that's a great project. You had sixty-one thousand dollars that you got as far as incentives for what you did, and you saved twenty-six thousand dollars because of those LED streetlights. Over to the right, you've got business customers that did different projects, and then down to the bottom, you've got equivalents. So we use some of the DOE, the Department of Energy, and the National Energy Technology Lab numbers when we compute some of what those different results are. So that's two thousand and twenty, and if you compare it to year-to-date, if you could go to the next slide, you can see that, you know, it's significantly much higher. We started our program in two thousand and eight. ComEd is very proud of its Energy Efficiency Program. The design and implementation of it has been a model for many utilities across the nation. We received several awards, and I'm not here to talk about our awards, but nine years in a row, we've gotten some really great awards from Energy Star and the EPA. But here, you'll see that you have the same exact type of programs and the different groups and some of the results that are there. So Belvidere has done a great job, I think, you know, with the federal and, you know, recent state goals that we have going forward for clean energy and energy efficiency. You'll see offerings that are added to this as we kind of roll out how that bill's going to look, and you'll have opportunities to engage in those as well. So thank you very much for your work on energy efficiency. I know it sounds weird. Why would an energy company want to reduce energy? Because the savings are there. The savings are there for us, they're there for you, and it's for our environment. At that point, I'll go ahead and close out and just remind you that there are some more slides there, and that's accessible to you as well as the residents if you want to share that. Any questions?
Any questions for Susanna?
Just curious. Like it says, smart thermostats installed. Where do you get those numbers from? Like, find out the unit installed.
Yes, yeah. So the home energy assessments, when someone calls ComEd and they ask for home energy assessment, and as part of the assessment, they want to purchase a thermostat, that's one site. Some people will go directly to our marketplace on ComEd, and they'll purchase it directly there as well. So we track that from direct purchase as well as participation in the program.
Okay, so someone like me, my numbers would be in there.
No, correct, correct.
That's probably the same thing as refrigerators.
Well, some of the refrigerators are part of the Energy Star program, and so when you get your discount, it gets counted through ComEd. So if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's and you're looking at a, you know, a refrigerator, a dehumidifier, those are two of the appliances, you'll see that it's Energy Star rated, and that, that base, I mean, it may not be something that gets counted to your name or your house, but your zip code through your credit card, if you're paying with a credit card, that'll get calculated. Yeah. Anything else? All right. Thank you again for having us, and thank you so much for all of your service, older men and older women, and thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Susanna. Nice to see you again.
You too, you too. Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll.
Look forward to it, absolutely. All right.
Thank you again. Thank you, Henry. Okay. Item number one, Public Works unfinished business. We have none. We'll move to item number two, Public Works New Business. Public Works Department update. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the Street Department, our leaf collection continues. It will continue as long as the weather permits. As of last Friday, we did have all the piles that we are aware of picked up, but with this nice weather that we're experiencing, more piles are showing up, so we will continue to pick them up as long as the weather permits. The contractor has completed his work on the leaf demolition. The fences have come down, and the Street Department now will be doing some, we've got some minor grading, final grading to do, and we will be seeding the area down, and that'll complete the work at this time for that project. So it's good to have completed. And then on the water side, our work at well number five has also been completed, and that well was back online in the system today. So good news there as well.
That is good news. Any questions for Brent regarding any of that update? I know the leaves have worked in our favor this year, Brent. Obviously, the more nice weather we have, at least we're not plowing, plowing snow and plowing leaves out of the right of way, so that has worked in our favor, but the guys have worked very hard at it, and I know we're not completely finished. There always seems to be some that reappear, but for the most part, I have received several calls that people appreciate that because obviously, you know, it's a service that we provide since we don't allow burning, and I think, I know I appreciate it, and I think most of the people appreciate. When we have nice weather, they can go outside without, you know, breathing smoke, and they can see the sunshine, so I think that's the way it should work, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Also, then, item B, you have replacement of the air dryer for well number ten. Brent?
Yes, sir. Memo on your packets, the air dryer for our air compressor on the filtration system at well number ten needs to be replaced. It's basically a dehumidifier, takes the moisture out of the air. We have received two proposals for that replacement. Seroni Piping Company, two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Helm Service, otherwise known as Mechanical, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. Eight dollars, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Seroni Piping in the amount of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the furnishing and installing a new air dryer for the well ten filtration system. This equipment will be paid for from line item sixty-one, five, eight, ten, sixty, twenty.
Okay, could we get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee, and that is the low bid. Any discussion? Any questions for Brent? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor then for approval, sending the approval for the proposal for Seroni Piping in the amount of two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for furnishing and installing a new air dryer for the well number ten filtration system, which the equipment will be paid for from the line item number sixty-one dash five dash eight one zero dash six zero two zero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. And Brent, then you also have item C, the filter screen replacement at wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir. Memo on your packet, again, we have a, we have four disc filter vessels at the wastewater treatment plant, and they remove our suspended solids from the waste stream. Each of those vessels contains three hundred and sixty-four filter fabric screens, which need to be replaced over time. The screens are proprietary from Kruger and not available elsewhere. In two thousand and nineteen, council approved the purchase of screens for one vessel at a cost of fifty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars, twenty-eight cents, which is a hundred and forty-four dollars and two cents per filter. Our plan then was to replace all the filters in one vessel per year. However, in discussions with Kruger, if we purchase all of the filters for the remaining three vessels at this time, the unit price per filter would be a hundred and nineteen dollars and six cents, a savings of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Yeah, we did not make a purchase of filters last year due to the COVID situation and the things that were going on in the industry at that time, so we do have three filter vessels yet to replace. I would recommend approval of the purchase of eleven hundred filter fabric screens from Viola Water Technologies, the Kruger parent company, at a cost of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, which includes shipping. These screens will be paid for from line item sixty-one, five, eight, twenty, sixty, ten. A motion to waive the bidding requirement for this purchase will also be required.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to waive.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. We better probably have a motion to pass first. Is that correct?
Seeing as you take a motion, we finish that one first.
Okay. So we have a motion then to go ahead and waive the two-week layover. The bidding requirement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Then, we would have a motion to approve the purchase of the eleven hundred filter fabric screens from Viola Water Technologies, Kruger parent company, at a cost of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents, include shipping. These screens will be paid for from the line item number sixty-one dash five dash eight two zero dash six zero one zero. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion regarding that? Looks like we're going to save quite a bit of money that way, and I'm sure you can find other uses for that. Brent? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion passed. Okay, thank you. Moving along, item three, Building Planning Zoning, unfinished business. We have none. Item four, Building Planning Zoning, new business, Planning Zoning Department Update. Gina?
So this is the time of year where my cases usually dwindle down. People don't think, get their special uses and rezonies in place until they want to break ground in the spring, and then it's rush, rush, rush. So not a lot of cases going on. You know, November had the rezoning. This month, it is an amended special use for outdoor storage. Zoning letters are decreasing, so it's really the time. We just got a new filing cabinet in the office today because. today because right now I have a stack of files that don't fit in our cabinets. So it'll be housekeeping month in December, you know, rearranging our filing cabinets, getting stuff put away, maybe purging some stuff to save room. So although cases are down and zoning letters are down, we are definitely continuing to stay busy in the office, catching up on all that little stuff we can't do throughout the year. Hometown Christmas, even though that's December, obviously, that was a huge hit. Public Works, fire station, police, everyone participated, did a great job. And I went to a tourism conference last week, so learned more about TikTok than I'll ever want to know. But good ideas on marketing our festivals and helping get sponsorships and stuff like that. And then that was really the highlights. Historic Preservation still has vacancies. They are going to have a fundraiser in February, so keep an eye out for that. In the meantime, Dave Larson from the Journal donated all of his postcard, postcard books to the commission so that we can sell those as a fundraiser and keep the profit. So that was very generous of him. Sold four today. So hey. And then I sent out for both the Historic Preservation Grant and the city's facade grant, those projects are supposed to be done in the next couple of weeks. So I sent out letters reminding everyone, hey, if you did it, I need your invoices for reimbursement. If you didn't do it, I need a reason why and a request for an extension. Since those letters came out, I've gotten two requests for reimbursement in from projects that were done, and they just never submitted it. So I expect a fumer to come trickling in. And sent out a letter notifying a property owner that his special use is about to expire. So I will be interested to see how that is responded to. So that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Gina? The hometown Christmas, I, I don't know, that was probably as big of event as I've ever seen down in our downtown, at our downtown.
Yep. I didn't even get to walk around this year. I was at the, we went through 1,000 cups of hot chocolate at the fire station before eight o'clock. And then straight from the fire station, I went to the museum because Historic Preservation was selling the books at the museum too for the fundraiser. So I only made it to those two entities. I know the museum had about 1,000 people walk through. I heard community building was just a madhouse. So it was great weather, which always helps a lot. So it, everyone behaved, everyone went, everything went well. We didn't lose power at the tree lighting this year, so that was great.
Yes, it, it did work out good, didn't it? Well, yeah, it was, it was a very, very good event. And I think, you know, to me, people love their freedom. They love to be downtown and be a part of something like that. And I enjoyed it. And thank you for all your hard work. So I appreciate it. Mike?
Yeah, this is for Gina. What did you say the fundraiser was going to be in February?
Oh, it is going to be a stained glass window tour. So we're going to work with the local churches. Right now, the concept is probably have everyone meet at the museum, maybe do a little history of stained glass. They have a couple exhibits at the museum. And then give everyone kind of a map so people go in different directions so they're not so cluttered, box lunch, kind of like the scavenger hunt. And then go to the different churches and then have someone from the church explain the meaning behind their stained glass window, how they acquired it, in case there's a story behind it, and stuff like that. So.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Would you tell, tell Dave Larson thank you? Appreciate that. Item 4B, update, Building Department update. Kip is not here this evening. So he asked me if I would read his update for him. So here we go. Update from the Director of Buildings for the month of November. We had 62 permits were issued for a value of construction at $2,722,846, of which eight were commercial, and 14 were new single-family homes in Farmington, Riverbend, and Deer Hills. They were issued to Newark Homes. The commercial permits issued included the demo of the Park District log cabin and a detached garage for the Anderson Funeral Home Project. Also had two additional houses were demoed last month for the Anderson Funeral Home Project, and construction is still going, is still ongoing for about, for around 40 single-family houses in the City of Belvedere. Code enforcement is 30 cases currently open. And of the 24 open cases last month, 22, 22 were closed. So that's the update. I won't take any questions on that because I really don't know anything more. So moving on, item five, under other, we have a memo in the packet from the City Attorney, Drella, regarding the census. So I'll let him make some comments on that, please.
Okay. The memo, although it's short, actually tackles three separate issues relating to the census. The first one, as you know, Jesse Wise certified the final population for the City of Belvedere is 25,339 persons. The good news is that means we keep our home rule status, and we do not have to worry about changing how we do things in the City of Belvedere. Obviously, as you know, the council historically does not use this home rule authority very often. For example, we've always kept our property tax rates below the tax caps as imposed if we were non-home rule. But it's nice to have that. We've used it a couple of times to help development projects and things like that, or to streamline approvals for constituents. So the good news is we kept our home rule authority. The second issue that is triggered whenever there's a census is the possible need to redistrict the ward boundaries within the City of Belvedere. That is typically triggered when you gain so much population that you add the number of aldermen, and then it's required by state statute. Also, constitutional law provides that if your population shifts between the wards, making one ward drastically larger than another ward, you should redistrict. So once we have the final ward populations done, I asked Grant Anderson, our GS specialist, to prepare a map, I believe that was in your packet as well, to show the population of each of the wards. And the rule of thumb that everybody uses is 10%. You want to make sure the wards are within 10% of each other. And they are. So there's no need for the council to redistrict at this time. You can if you want to, but I don't recommend it because that always becomes kind of a nightmare. So there's no legal requirement for us to redistrict. The third issue that's raised, and I alluded to it briefly, is the state statute, the Illinois Municipal Code identifies how many aldermen each city is supposed to have based upon their population. And actually, in populations between 20,000 and 50,000 persons, you're supposed to have 14 aldermen. As you know, we have 10. That's because that same section also allows a municipality within that time, within that population limit to pass an ordinance establishing the number of aldermen at 10. The City of Belvedere did that as ordinance 506G, I think it was 20, I'm sorry, 2002. That ordinance is still good. However, the way the statute's written, it says after the census, if you want to have 10 aldermen, you adopt this ordinance. So just to keep everything happy, and make sure that we take away any possible arguments that we might have in the next 10 years, I recommend re-adopting ordinance 506G, simply as a fail-safe and a best practice. So the recommendation coming out of this evening, we have motion to re-adopt and reform ordinance 506G.
Okay. Could we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion? Any questions regarding that? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And that is all. Chief Heiser?
Mayor, I'm going to take you up on your offer of reporting on that structure.
Well, here, I crossed your name off. But I'll, that's okay. That's okay, because I'm going to call on you right now. So you had an update for us.
Yes.
Regarding a fire that we'd had here recently. Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity. Okay. This past Friday night at 5:30, Belvedere Fire Department responded to a house fire in the 1600 block of Isles Avenue. On arrival, heavy smoke and flames were coming from the front of the home and working its way up to the second story. A quick knockdown of the fire was achieved in less than 10 minutes from the time of initial call. Four kids and a dog were able to escape. Unfortunately, a cat did not make it out of the home. Damage was estimated at roughly $75,000 on a house valued at anywhere from $225,000 to $250,000. A charging device is thought to be the cause of this fire. And worse yet, is a family of eight have been displaced. Typically, I like to, you know, do my report on Public Safety Night, but I think right here during the Christmas season and stuff, I wanted to get this out there. So thank you for this again. Typically, this, okay, so this family right now, we're, we're trying to do a GoFundMe, and then also some stuff on Facebook as well. So just keep them in your thoughts during this time. Like I said, eight people have been displaced during the holiday season, and it's terrible. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Heiser regarding the fire and the family that obviously are in need? Alderman Fleury?
Sorry. So Chief, you said there is a GoFundMe setup? Is that through the, how would people access that?
Right now, I get a former alderman is helping me with that. So I can come, more information. So he's on Facebook as well. So I will let you know some more information as I get it. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, maybe if we could share that with Sarah, City Hall as well. If we take any calls, we can disperse that information as well.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Tough, tough to have that happen, especially anytime. But this, this time of season, that's for sure. So with no other business on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, we adjourned at 6:41 PM. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.